I was meeting order. Tonight, we're gonna be leading the pledge by Mr. Gary Iks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Iks. I'd like to welcome everyone to this, our first meeting for June work session. Anyone have any questions on the agenda? How about consent agenda?
Chairman, I just wonder if there were some of these funds that booster clubs turn in. We've got some pretty large sums here. Is there any way that you that could ever come back on the us to...
Uh, I don't know. Have to ask Mr. Sandvig or...
I'm sorry, I'm here, Mr. Iks.
On these booster clubs, some of these guys turn in some pretty large sums. And hearing the news lately, we're hearing a lot of things about people coming from these booster clubs. Is there any way that could ever come back on the school board?
We should be fine with that. They have to document it in their, the minutes and all. Actually, I'm much more comfortable with these items than I was because a couple of years ago, we started getting board approval for them. So, it's been going on since long before I came here. And now that we have board approval, it's much more transparent than it used to be. And I think that was a... Now, some of it was painful to my office, but we've made the conversion.
If they're paid from school funds, they're...
It goes through payroll.
It goes through payroll with all the deductions.
Right. Or if they are board employees, which most of these are.
So, if a quarterback club at a particular school pays one of the coaches for the field work...
Right.
Mowing and fertilizing, do, does that coach get a 1099 from that booster club?
Almost never. It is almost entirely goes through us. The only area where, when that was approved, some of the camps, that might go straight to, the coach might get a payment from a booster club or the school for one of the camps. But that's the only area where it doesn't flow through four board employees.
Okay. So, probably 99, 99.9% of the time, it flows through...
Yes, sir.
The financial office?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Anybody got any other questions on that? Mr. Donigan, you look like you're studying something.
Well, I was just thinking about how much money is the booster clubs do put into organizations? And as Mr. Young said, there's some pretty hefty amounts in there. But that's, it's almost like saying it's the nature of the beast.
You got one here that's about $47,000.
Yeah.
Pretty, pretty good chunk of change.
I'm just trying to figure out how you raise up that kind of money. I don't know how you raise that kind of money.
I don't. I can't, well, I'm just going down that road.
Anybody else? All right, Mr. Odom.
Okay, we will introduce the new principals Thursday night. One of them will not be with us, the one at Kitterell, this event. She is PLC training this weekend, and they are, they're coming back that day, but she won't be here. So, we'll bring her another night for you to see that. Number eight, we ready for that one?
Yes, sir.
Siegel Middle School Baseball Storage Building. Principal Delbridge has requested permission to build a 20-foot by 28-foot metal storage building adjacent to the third baseline at the Siegel Middle School baseball field. The building will be built on a slab, have electricity, and will include an overhead roll-up door and a pedestrian door. It will match the existing structures and be funded by the booster club. The club will also be responsible for all pertinent permits and code compliance. Gender equity will not be an issue since the school plans to furnish a storage building for the softball team. Recommend approval, motion to approve a baseball storage building at Siegel Middle School as presented at no cost to the board.
I guess my question would be, Mr. Cardy, on these permits and codes compliance, do you take care of all that or...
They apply, they usually have builders, booster clubs that help them. So, they apply to get the permit. The city won't let them actually start its work until the permit's replaced. So, if they have any problems sometime, we'll do a plan for them to get a little bit...
So, you don't get directly involved or signing off on it?
Not really, not unless they just can't get one for some reason. Then we try to get to the bottom of what it is and then the government address that.
Anybody got a comment? All right, Mr. Odom, number nine.
Number nine is new and revised policies, of course. Ms. McLeod, this time we bring it with the changes that the legislature had. You're on the policy committee. You've done that, it has to go to print this month, so it'll be ready to hand out in August basically for students. So, new and revised policies, we've got policy 5.115, assignment and transfer, policy 4-400, instructional materials, policy 4-401, textbooks, policy 4.700, testing programs, policy 4.802, student equal access, which is limited public forum, and policy 4.803, recognition of religious beliefs, customs, and holidays, policy 5.200, separation practice for tenured teachers, policy 5.201, separation practices for non-tenured teachers, policy 6.200 attendance, policy 6.317, student disciplinary authority, policy 6.4001, survey students, analysis, and evaluations, policy 6.600, student records, policy 1.400, school board meetings. The purpose of the revisions is to comply with requirements in new state laws and regulations. Policy 6.312, use of personal communication devices and cellular telephones. The purpose of this revision is to address and regulate the growing popularity of wearable technology, where it's Google glasses, watches, rings, that has the capacity to record, live stream, or interact with wireless technology. There's two motions, recommend approval, motion to waive the second reading as a meeting limitation to allow the board to take immediate action on the policies presented, and then recommend approval, motion to approve policies 5.115, 5.400, 5.401, 4.700, 4.802, 4.803, 5.200, 5.201, 6.200, 6.317, 6.4001, 6.600, 1.400, and 6.312, as recommended by the policy committee.
I know we went over these, probably, since I've been on board, probably the longest policy meeting I've ever been in, I guess. We went over these things pretty well the other night. I believe we all come away satisfied with what we got. Does anybody have any further comments on any of them or...
The legislature was active this year.
They're more than active. They need, they need to take a break one semester. Mr. Holliday?
Our policy 5.201, on separation practices for non-tenured teachers, we're moving the date that's required information from May 15th to June 15th.
Is statutory?
Will, it is statutory that it be done by June 15th.
On or before?
On or before. I asked the question in the policy committee, and now, just among the board here, I'm gonna ask the question a little bit differently. And the question is, you know, is it June 15th or is it on or before? And the answer is, it's on or before. I was wondering if any of our teacher representatives on the policy committee might take up the initiative and say, boy, it sure would be nice to know that by May 15th so that we could apply for some other position. My thinking is twofold. Number one, as a board member, we gotta watch out for the system, and it's certainly best for us to push that back to June 15th, allow us to completely finish with everybody fully engaged in the system and all that kind of stuff. And then, at a June 15th point, we say, this is not working out, and we make the separations that we need to. And yet, if we are the high achieving system that we are, and we select among the finest possible candidates, just because you didn't fit in Rutherford County schools doesn't mean you're necessarily a bad teacher. And to afford that individual the best possible opportunity to move on to another opportunity, particularly in a circumstance where we're challenged to show our teachers how we appreciate them, I think the policy is correct and appropriate for June 15th. But if in practice, administratively, HR directive, or just best possible standards, if we can make every effort to inform those teachers as soon as possible and give them that opportunity...
Ms. Barnes, we did it in May this year. You wanna tell them what, basically, we basically are doing mostly what you're saying.
Exactly. And my only concern is by shifting this policy, as we should, to June 15th, it's the right decision for our board to make. And yet, I still want to express to our teachers, even those teachers that may not stick with our system, we want you to land on your feet.
Historically, we had, years ago, we had to notify teachers by April 15th.
Wow.
That was the date for many years, up until maybe two years ago, Angel. And then, the legislative body changed it to June 15th. So, we opted to try notification during the last week in May. We felt that would still give teachers a reasonable amount of time to apply for positions in other systems, or back with us in some cases. But it also kept a better harmony in the schools during those last couple of weeks because when you make that notification, it does disrupt the presence of teachers in the building. It makes things very stressful for some people. And so, doing that notification during the last week is helpful to our principals in our buildings. But we do make, this year, we made the notification on May 23rd. So, we're just talking a few days beyond the date that you're suggesting.
Right.
I just wanted to clarify something real quickly. What we're referring to is non-renewing teachers, our notice of non-renewal. What you're referring to is assignment and transfer. So, the June 15th date applies to notifying teachers if they're being moved to a different school, to a different position. So, two different, two different dates.
The date for separation and of non-renewed, would that be June 15th?
That's June 15th is the date we have to notify them by, but we do it early.
But we do it earlier.
Because they're not, they're not with us if we want to...
Right. But the transfer, the assignment and transfer date, we do extend sometimes to June 15th because then we know who's not coming back, who is, and moving around.
Right. But the policy that we're changing from May 15th to June 15th, that's for non-renewals, right?
I think that's in the assignment and transfer.
Okay, I may be...
No, it says separation practices.
Well, both of them are there. 5115 is the first one, assignment and transfer, and then 5201, and I may be confused.
The one that we're changing on this policy agenda is the assignment and transfer. The other one has previously been changed.
Well, then, what are we doing to 5.201? Because it's on here as well.
5.201 is separation practices for non-tenured teachers. That's the one where we added the provision, just like we did in the tenured teachers, whereby we cannot suspend a teacher for longer than 90 days without either bringing charges or if there's a criminal investigation going on.
Very well.
So, the June 15th date for this committee, I mean, for this round, is for the assignment and transfer.
Perfect. Very well done.
Yeah, I think the last week, or kind of using a drop dead date of June 1st, would be, would be a fair practice for those. Would be my thought.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, that brings up a point. I have a hard time voting on anything that, I don't have a clear-cut understanding of what's in the policy. I know we sit on the policy meeting, we all talked about it, we all threw out a lot of ideas, but there was not, I'd like to see the clear policy as it is written, ready for, to be voted on.
Just to address that, typically, you would have those at this juncture, but because we were on a tight timeframe and didn't get those from TSBA until the day before the meeting, I have sent all those revisions to them, and I expect to have them back in the morning. So, before you vote on Thursday, you should have copies of all of them.
Mr. Iks?
I would assume that by April 15th now, I've never been, never been asked to leave a school except after officiating the ballgame perhaps, but if, I would assume the principal might know April 15th, he's worked with that teacher all through long, and he's, you know, coming to his conclusion. If I were a teacher and I came to my principal and said, look, I don't even know if I'm gonna be rehired, would it be something that we might expect from that principal to say, yes, you would? Or, Mr. Iks, I'm sorry, but after reviewing the work that's come out of your classroom this year, it's just been determined that, would they let me know at that juncture if I came to them? Do you think, or would they say, we'll talk about that in the next few weeks?
The issue for, from the principal's perspective, and I've been there a good while too, is you're thinking about the students in the classroom. So, when, sometimes when you tell somebody they're not gonna be renewed in the lesson plans, the...
Well, I understand that. But my question was, and I think you've answered it, you would probably say, Mr. Iks, let's wait on that issue until about April 15th.
Some people handle it well, wouldn't change, and others would not. So, that's the, that's one of the difficult things. And it's why the legislature changed from April 15th. That was a discussion the legislature had a few years ago. And like I said, it hadn't been in place very long that they did that. But it was over that issue because so much was coming back from all over the state in relation to that. That's, that's when they changed it.
I think Mr. Jurnigan would've told me by Christmas if...
Well, he's had to do that a few times, so he can relate to you.
That's a tough job.
Anybody else? Ms. McLeod, when you, when you get these changes in the morning, I guess you'll have them in the morning?
Is there any way you email them to the board?
Okay. That'll way everybody have them beforehand and to look at them and review them versus getting them when we get here? If that works? Is that good with everybody else? Okay. General discussion.
I did ask Mr. Cardy to do something, just tell you, we talked about the slope roofs and that sort of thing when we looked at it. So, he has got some preliminary information, he's gonna make your presentation. Do you wanna talk anything about some of the preliminary findings that you've gotten so far before we can really give you a breakdown so you'll have a feel for what we're looking at? Because we've got to definitely look at some this summer and fall before another winter.
Right now, the preliminary estimate from alert roof systems is approximately $12.5 a square foot. And that's without some other things added, such as equipment, design, and some other things. So, that is over twice what it cost us to put on a membrane roof right now. So, with that said, if we moved and did that, then that would pretty much rob our capital improvements and put us twice as far behind as we are now. We're not getting enough money for the roofs as it is. We've developed this membrane process, and using the white membrane, it's a much better product than they used to use. We've developed some ways of installing it over what we call recovery board. It's easy to repair now. There's not as much human error because there's a double-sided tape that you use instead of having somebody spreading glue on the seams and things. So, it's working so much better. We've developed the details for around parapet walls and things like that. If we get a leak, we can find it pretty quick. We can go in there with the material while it's wet and patch it. So, it would be my recommendation at this time to stick with a membrane roofing. Now, I can, I haven't totally put all the figures together yet, but I compared those figures with what I have in my capital improvements plan and the pricing on that. And it is, you know, over double.
As he and I discussed, if we could take, say you wanna do one school, if you did Thurman Francis, you probably wouldn't have the primary where we had the problems and the burn where we had the issues. So, it's a tough call, the other one, the slope metal for walls, outside walls. You still have the engineering studies on the outside of walls.
Right. And we're actually sloping those now and running the water off the roof. We've gotten rid of a lot of the internal drains and things. With that membrane, you only need a quarter of an inch per foot or something like that. And so, they are actually slope, people, we call them flat roofs, but you do, they do have slope. We use tapered insulation and those kinds of things to get them off. So, you know, the program's working very well right now. We're getting the metal roofs, slope metal roofs on the new buildings. They, I'm almost at a point, since we've developed this white membrane and stuff, to start using that in some of the other areas now, since it's working so good, to maybe, if we get in a crunch somewhere. But I think working with the metal, slope metal roofs on new construction and sticking with replacing these that we're replacing right now with the membrane, I think is the appropriate way to go.
How long for membrane, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was just gonna ask, how long is the membrane good for?
Those are good for at least 15 years. And like I said, they're easy to repair. If you do have a problem, you can go in there and re-tape a piece over them. And, but the, the stuff has been developed, and they've continued to develop it. It's just so much better product than it was 15 years ago.
Some of the elderly structures have a condensing unit on the very top, on the roof.
Right.
The foot traffic, I would think, would diminish the longevity of that membrane. How do you get around the...
You put pads on the roof.
I'm sorry?
Put pads on the roof to walk on.
Do they stay up there permanently, or they just...
They do. They're glued right to the roof.
Okay. I wondered.
When you come up the ladder, you step up on those pads and walk them.
Okay. Makes sense.
Do they use the old tar roofs anymore with the gravel and all that?
No, that's the ones we're having a problem with right now. And for instance, we would be able to do all those roofs that were, had the issues with back in the winter in the zero-degree weather for what it would take to, for what it would take to do Thurman Francis in the slope metal right now.
Mr. Cardy, is there any possibility, are there any creative ways to handle what comes off of the roof? At least the gravel, do we, do we remove any of the, of the old roofing when we put back the white membrane?
We take, take the gravel off, and sometimes it depends, like these old cold tar roofs, they'll be torn off and gotten rid of. And I don't know of any way to recycle them. Since these membrane roofs we're putting in now are fully adhered, you don't need a ballast on them to hold them down. You know, they used to just put them up, put the membrane up there and then load them with gravel to keep them from blowing off. But now, we don't have to do that because there's adhesives that have been developed for that purpose.
Anybody else?
I thought it'd be interesting to kind of give you all an update on that since that was part of the discussion with the budget committee the other night. Sometimes we were talking about with that five cents, and we're facing it right now, you know, now. So, that's our, that's our issue.
Mr. Donigan?
How many schools have a membrane now? The new membrane?
I don't know exactly. I, we put that on all the schools we've done for the last four years, so it's quite a few of them. And I know that there's probably six or seven pitch, coal pitch, tire, tar, that need replacing now. And we've got four or five of those in this upcoming year to replace those and get those out, totally out of system. They're not even selling that stuff anymore because of the health hazard to the installer. When it's hot, it has carcinogens that come off of it.
25% of the schools in the next year or so will have this membrane?
Probably, yes. And just to give you another little update, I found out today that the insurance company's telling us that those issues that we had with the roof, they'll only patch those instead of replacing them. So, they gave me an estimate of patching them for $38,000. And we're gonna argue with them a little bit. That didn't even include, they didn't even have replacing any books or anything. We, my closest estimate just to the damage without any work, you know, patching or replacing those roofs was $68,000, my estimate was. So, that still doesn't help us get to the $100,000, but we won't actually, it looks like we probably won't get any money for that. But at least after the first year, we have that in the program to get those roofs replaced.
$68,000 was with the internal damages or just... It was?
Yeah, it was.
So, they're at $34,000, and internal damages, are they 10? Out of your $68,000 budget, how much, or estimate, how much were the internal damages?
Oh, that, well, that was the internal damages plus the work that we put into just temporarily fixing those.
Okay. So, that was not, that was not an estimate, that was our actual repair cost?
Right.
$68.
And that wasn't, that was just a patch on the roof. It wasn't a permanent repair. If, that's the money that we spend in time and material...
Yeah.
To fix those roofs, plus the internal damage such as library books that were all ruined, was $68,000.
I hope we're sending them a strongly worded letter.
Well, I had a discussion with them today.
Good, good. Because, I mean, it is what it is. That's the, that's the cost of, of changing it. And I don't understand where their estimates would come from, so, so much low.
But it's just that we've got a $100,000 deductible right out of the gate.
But I did, I sent them my estimate today in detail with a spreadsheet, with it all surmised on it. So, was a summary.
So, did we request replacement due to the damage? And they denied it?
We haven't, but I think we will be because their engineering report just required patching it, permanent patch. But we're gonna have to do our own engineering study now and see what we determine.
Because they'll, they'll present you with an engineering report, and you can match them up and then, and work out, and then go shape them there.
Yeah, I think that's what, that's what we'll end up doing. But I don't know if we'll, how that all come out. But right now, it appears it's gonna be tough to get over that $100,000 mark.
Well, we, we have confidence in your mediation skills.
Well, we'll, we'll see what happens.
That $100,000 deductible is, is tough right from the get-go.
I asked a question, is that $100,000 per year or $100,000 per incident or side? So, it's for the year, isn't it?
It's per occurrence.
Per occurrence. Oh, man.
Per building?
I'm sorry?
Per occurrence, per building.
I would, I would think so.
Per occurrence.
But if, if what, if, if an occurrence happens on one end of the county and the, and it have, see, I, I think it'd be, I think it's probably per site, maybe not per building, but.
But we had the hail, the hail damage a few years ago, that was all working together, just from the same storm, so.
Pretty much up to sure.
Partially, anyway.
That'd be very catastrophic for the insurance to pay.
Mr. Higgs?
Well, different topic apparently.
We'll go to the next topic.
All right. Is it the responsibility of this board to be concerned about incidents such as the prank, that, cranks that occurred in school years and this, on, on our property, by the way, property that's, I guess, in a, in a sense controlled by this board? Um, I'm, I just got so much terrible feedback through all that went on, when I read that, that an amphitheater was flooded, I've not been on the site, I don't know what the amphitheater is, and I don't know that's absolute.
It's outdoor, this and that.
Outdoor thing, okay. Um, but anyway, we just took a, a big hit, and I thought, I thought that whole thing. I, I, I'm thinking that in the next little period of time, we look at some kind of policy regulating.
We have zero tolerance policy, Mr. Carter, that we added, we actually added the vandalism to our zero tolerance last year, wasn't it, or within the last two years or so? Yeah. Is it five hundred dollars?
If, if they are charged, if they're permanently charged and the amount is over five hundred dollars, then it's physical tolerance.
Does, is there such thing as felony vandalism, or is it just, um, miscellaneous A or?
If they were adult offenders, it would be classified as a felony if it's over five hundred dollars, but because typically they're juvenile, they don't classify them as misdemeanor or felony, but that would be felony amount if they were adults.
Okay.
And who, who would have to be the one charging them? The board or the principal?
Um, we have had a different circumstances come up, on, sometimes it has been school officials that do it, sometimes it has been law enforcement officials, depending on what circumstances are.
Let's just shut this thing about it, nobody brings it up again, and I know there's not a real big interest in doing that, and I know that, you know, maybe I'm overstating my concerns at the moment.
Mr. Sandvik? Mr. Oden talked, he tells me you've been on a fact finding mission the last couple of days.
Yes, sir.
Have you learned anything that you can share with us? I figure we'd get a report out of you.
Well, today was the depressing day. Fraud and financial distress were topics today. Yesterday it was more accounting and auditing updates, but, uh, quite a bit of it was on fraud. And how often in these big municipal or county or school system financial disasters, fraud has, major fraud has been involved and kind of pushed them over the edge. So it was a, a very somber two days.
In what regard, but as far as the fraud, you got any examples or?
Oh.
Embezzlement?
Different, different types of embezzlement. People figure their way, their ways around internal controls. Uh, yeah, we try to be on the lookout in all the stuff that comes through our office. We meet with the school bookkeepers once a year. Uh, principals got off last year, but I'll meet with the principals this fall and go over stuff with them. But, uh, you just have to really be on the lookout and, uh, all these internal controls that are in place, and a lot of them are mandated by the state. If they aren't followed, people, people can work around them, but if you're not following those, and we try to follow all of them, tell everyone they've got to be followed, you really set yourself up. And generally it is smaller amounts, but that, that is one of the concerns we have with booster clubs. It's, it's a perfect environment to only have one person who is in charge of all the money, and if that person gets tempted, and, uh, yeah.
Yeah, when you're looking at three or four thousand dollar amounts, that's not too big.
Right.
You're looking at forty something thousand dollars.
Sure. Oh, yes. Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah.
We have, since we're on television, you might explain the auditing, annual auditing procedure so the public will know what's done.
Well, we, we go through two types of audits here, through state audit, and I don't remember the new exact terms, it's like local government audit, they've combined divisions and all, I'm wrong on the name of it. They audit Rutherford County, so that includes us, all of the county government, all of our federal funds, that, we get a financial, well, we now get a PDF of it, but it's about that thick if you print it off, hundred and eighty to two hundred pages of reports. Uh, Mr. Oden, Mr. Hodge and I will meet with the state auditors at different times, and then at the same time, we have an audit of all of our school activity funds. Our two alternative schools are the only schools that don't have school activity funds. And we contracted through y'all with, uh, Matlock and Clements CPA firm, and they do compliance reporting on our cafeterias, which is then fed into the state. And then they audit all of our forty-five sets of school books. And they send out, and there was a lot of discussion of this yesterday, and I generally get several calls about it, I haven't yet, but they will send out questionnaires randomly to board employees, and I'll get a call, what's this? Or a principal, what is this? No, we do it every, we, our auditors do it every year, are you aware of any fraud? And, uh, moving forward from there and just auditing the books, making sure they're following all of our policies and the, the state accounting manual and stuff, and a lot of the findings that we get, because you're going to get findings, is, you know, it is, a purchase order has not been stamped paid. We are supposed to have two signatures on all of our checks, some checks wind up going out without two signatures, the banks won't send them back anymore. Thirty years ago, they'd send a big one back, they won't send them back anymore. Uh, yeah, items like that tend to be our issues. Are the ticket reconciliations properly done? So that, that's the thrust of that audit. And, uh, they will generally get the, the audit, that audit report to us, last year, I think it was even late September, but, uh, we send you all copies of that, and, uh, if you, if you ever have questions, you know, give me a call, give me a warning if you have questions so I can, you know, be prepared to answer it, do some research, but, uh, be glad to answer any of those questions or anything in the, in the school part of countywide audit.
So did my general comment myself, that's the big books that we get, you know, uh, I don't know how, if, I guess, although you pretty well look over them, uh, I look at all of them because it, it's really interesting, but, uh, uh, I, I'd like to say it's a compliment to you and the, uh, all the bookkeepers and all that, because if you look at the findings, uh, you got very few, uh, in the amount of transactions they do on an annual basis per school. Uh, you know, if I remember right, you know, some of them may have three or four, and some of them may have five or six, something like that, but I don't recall any having a whole, whole lot of.
And most of them are those minor ones that something should have happened in processing the payable, or a purchase order wasn't obtained, but it's a minor purchase. Anything that is above that level, I get with the principal on, uh, I've talked to the director of schools, if it rises to that level, that is unusual for us to have happen. I think, maybe I've talked to you about one school, uh, but the, we have our school bookkeepers, our, we have a bunch of good school book, they, bookkeepers who work hard, uh, we don't have the resources to have some of the, ideally, we would separate the cash receipting function, and we try to, but when you have one and a half clerical positions in a school, we don't have some of the separations ideally we'd like to have, but it would take a whole lot of people to get them, and a whole lot of staff, and then, and my staff look over and get calls from the school bookkeepers and, but do review each, each of the ladies, not, not all of them, but each of the ones who review schools has a certain set, and they look at the bank reconciliations, uh, have items sent in, just look them over, and, you know, do we see any issues that we need to get with and train more or whatever, so.
Mr. Carter?
There is also a county audit committee?
Right.
That you have to go before if you state fines.
Right, with the state, mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
I think Mr. Blair sits on that.
Yeah.
Mr. Carter?
Fundraising in and of itself, I'm sorry, Mr. Carter?
Go ahead.
In, in and of itself is, is totally out of the hands of, I mean, it's done by booster clubs. They sanction that in whatever manner they think necessary.
We approve booster club fundraising, uh, how long have we been a, a state that has had legalized gambling? Does anyone, well, I, I still will occasionally get, oh, we're going to have a drawing for a truck. That, that's rare now, but, uh, I do, every year I will get a few, we do require the boosters to send in a fundraiser form, and most of them are perfectly fine. We do require that they be in compliance with the state laws for booster clubs, that they have a, a charter, that they have given us financial reports and the like requirements under state law. A lot of the, the fundraisers come in from the schools. We look them over for appropriateness, again, most of them are fine. Every once in a while, I think maybe the principals have so many papers that they don't really, you want to do what? You know, we're not going there, but it's unusual to turn one down. More often it's modifying a term or something in them, but those are, do get approval. Yes.
Basically what you're doing?
Basically what the ladies in my department do is, it is a light form of internal auditing, and if we see anything untoward, and we have had to get into, uh, we have on occasion, it's been rare, recommended that a bookkeeper not be rehired or be reassigned to some other duty, and we do interview the bookkeeping applicants whenever there is a vacancy, and our goal is not to, to put the person of our choice in, our goal though is to put someone in who either has the background or we think has the aptitude, because school bookkeeping is involved, it's not just keeping a checkbook.
So you're, you're in effect, uh, sending, sending acceptable applications to the principal to make the call?
Yes, sir, mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, yeah. And like, uh, one of the ladies, uh, Mrs. Sradka, I don't, she may not have been with the system when you retired, or she may have, I don't, I'm not sure, it was close, but, uh, she was at Smyrna Middle and then Laverne Middle, and she is the lady we tend to send out to one of the schools, especially if it's a middle school or a high school, to train and work with the new bookkeepers or if we see problems, so.
I don't remember a word of them.
Yeah.
Now that it's electronic and it, it's online, it's not like, you're not going to see the books till the end of the year, they're running in as they work day by day, and that's sort of, so you have a chance to monitor it all along, much better than it was, you know, years ago when we just had to turn in the big boxes at the end of the year.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Carter?
I'm accustomed to seeing on those audit reports, typically it's separation of records, keeping these records in this cabinet and those records, and then these have to be in a locked cabinet, and it's, it's most often procedural issues.
Yes.
It's refreshing to see that those things are taken into account and, and we're monitoring that, and I also take notice that we don't see the same things at the same school.
Yeah.
And so, you know, when we do see that, I, I imagine that's something that your department, uh, comes up with.
Yes.
Because you mentioned it, uh, where are you on approving fundraisers that involve, uh, opportunities of chance?
They are not approved.
Okay.
And I get fewer than I used to, but, you know, I'll, I'll still get a couple a year.
On what basis are they not approved?
It's illegal. The only, basically you have to have the state legislature approve it. You, there will be a law or an approval that's approved by the legislature once or twice a year, basically you have to get on that list.
If someone were to be so proactive as to get on that list, would they find a good reception in Rutherford County or not so much?
Uh, I don't know if, the times I have been asked, I don't think that their fundraising goal was big enough for them to go through all of the trouble, probably legal representation and all of that.
It would have to be a 501(c)(3), wouldn't it?
I, I believe so, and.
I think to, to make that.
Yeah, to even apply.
To apply, you have to give, I believe, 501(c)(3).
Yeah, yeah, I, I would be, I would just soon see none.
I understand.
It's, you know, it's.
But, but you know that there are circumstances?
A few, sure.
Even currently where people are trying to figure out a way to, to make that happen.
Yes, oh, yeah.
So we'll see.
Yeah, mm-hmm. But I, I believe y'all would have to approve it. It's been six months or so since I was asked that and I checked on it, I, I believe y'all would have, one of the steps is that you, the board, would have to approve it, I believe, and then.
Then we'd have to go to state legislature.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Now, my question really was about the funds after they'd been raised.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my friend and I go out and for our booster club, we raise fifty thousand dollars. How, how do you know that I, and you just take my word and, and my friend's word, we both maybe attest to the fact that these are the funds we raised and that's pretty much all you have? Of course, that resolves you of any liability, I guess, for, if, if we do take a little lot of time.
Yes, now, the, these monies, booster club monies have kind of become quasi-public monies in the last eight, ten years, because previously they were exempted by statute from fraud audit by the state of Tennessee. That, that was rather controversial change in the law, and it was amended the next year, and I, I like the second version better, but if, and if I become aware of, if a principal, Mr. Oden, become aware of, uh, and I tend to be the one who becomes aware of it, either someone who says something's not right, if we see any evidence of it, if the booster group will not give us records we request, there is a form that I file with the comptroller's department, and it gets on the list for, to be examined for potential fraud, and they, that group has subpoena power, they can go after financial records, everything. Uh, you are, we strongly recommend, unless you are very small, essentially, even if you're very small, you're a de facto 501(c)(3). As you get larger, you really have to file with the IRS, and again, if you, the booster club board and officers potentially are personally liable, and there have been cases, one of the ones, I think Lexington, if, the, the board and officers were liable for some sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Did you, maybe within the last five, six, seven years, have an experience where you sought to get some records from booster? sought to get some records from a booster club and, and they didn't come through?
Yes, then they get to deal with the state.
You give them a chance, I guess.
Oh, absolutely, but if we, if we suspect there is fraud by statute, we have to report it right away, and normally we, we try to look at some records and all that, because some of those tips and all can be groundless, but if we can't get the records in a reasonable amount of time, actually, one of the, Mr. Dykes, who used to be over the municipal audit, fraud division and county audit, one of the ones he flashed up was one of our booster clubs that had a headline, and that was one where the records were not provided and largely didn't exist.
Is there set amounts that you cannot go over as far as booster club?
No, sir. We have not set anything like that.
Even the state?
No, sir, mhm.
I know it's impossible, but I'm naive enough to think that we could improve on negative publicity in the newspaper relating to Rutherford County school system, whatever, and we've had our share this year, and it aggravates all of us when we see it. It, it's, it's a hurtful feeling for schools who will tend to pick up a paper and see somebody that he's entrusted to do the right thing and not do. So, this is just one of those areas that we can say, hey, we've got laws, you need to obey the law.
Oh, yes.
That won't catch everybody's attention, but I think we need to be proactive in, in whatever ways we can be.
Tell them about your meeting that you brought with these booster clubs.
Yes, and I do, I, every year I do meet, and it's not mandatory, some principals require them to go to it, some don't, but I do have an evening meeting with PTO and booster club officials, and talk about fun for an hour and a half, two hours, it's hit three hours before, talk about these items, and a lot of it, 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 the, the years after the state changes, it was, they were very challenging meetings. They've settled down somewhat, but just going over the laws, going over minimal internal controls, separation of duties, that being the biggest one.
He's doing a real favor by doing.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Most of these come in here really wanting to know.
Yeah.
You know, what, what can I do to keep from getting in trouble, I think.
Yeah.
And I think by and large they do want to know. They all want to do the right thing, but you always have that exception.
Several of them have made that decision, especially elementary and middle school, to shut down and run their fundraising through the school books. Yeah.
Just what you're saying, and I wasn't aware of it, which is, is not mandatory from the ten.
I really don't know that we can make it mandatory.
I mean, if they're going to have a club.
Yeah.
I don't know why we can't make it mandatory.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't know. I mean, that would be a legal interpretation of whether we can make somebody.
Well, I mean, if they're going to operate within the system, uh, I just think.
I mean, we, we could withhold approval, I mean, you, the board, could withhold approval.
Well, I think, and I wasn't aware that it wasn't, you know, wasn't mandatory for each, mandatory for each club, but I, I think it's just beneficial for each of them. I don't know how, how the board feels about it, but me sitting here, I can, I, I feel, I feel more comfortable knowing that all of them have been through your session. Now, I think you do it two different nights or something.
I, it has dropped down since all the law changes and people have kind of adjusted to that, so one night will pretty much cover it, but it, it will be a full boardroom that night.
Yeah, you're, the thing you have to realize is that you're in school clubs, you key clubs, you, you know, your things that are school, or later, run through the school books.
Yeah.
So that's, I mean, those are covered in that, who you have. So really what you're talking about is independent PTOs and boosters and that sort of thing is the one that he has to address most of the time is that.
And largely, numerically, it's mostly the high school groups.
But back up, man, what you're basically saying, they all don't cover.
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
Booster clubs and PTOs, all their monies had to go through the school. Sure would change that supplemental list.
Well, I mean, my, my thinking is just make sure, make sure everybody knows the rules, or what Mr. Sandig's rules are, that's.
I would concur that some representative from that, from that group should have to attend.
Jim Rea might be in charge.
Mr. Rea, would you want to comment on that? Mr. Odom just made mention.
You can make a procedure for the school system if you want to require for booster clubs, that, if you want to adopt that as a procedure.
Okay. But not only for protection of the system, but be for protection of the stakeholders that are busy raising those funds too.
Within the booster club?
Yes, sir.
We can discuss that. I mean, if anybody wants to discuss it further, you know, another meeting or whatever, you know, feel free to bring it up for agenda, whatever.
Since that's a procedure, would we even actually have to vote on it? Would we just, just show our favoritism?
Better answer, I don't know exactly how.
I mean, you could let the director of schools know your desire in that regard, it'd be up to him to implement a procedure that would, would enforce that.
I mean.
Is administrative procedure?
Yes.
Okay. It'd have to be a policy, so.
Anybody else? I just, Mr. Sandig, I just want to thank you for bringing that information to us. When Mr. Odom told me you'd been to a fraud conference the last couple of days, I just thought it was interesting. I mean, that's, that's the only reason I called, you know, figured you didn't enlighten us, and I think this discussion's been good for everybody. I mean, you basically brought up some items that I wasn't aware of, that, that I took for granted, so I'm sure the rest of the board members are the same way. Anything else?
We've each got a packet here. Mr. Odom, what's our agenda for this, just review before June 10th?
Right, this is the three appeals that you have to board. They're basically all related, I think, James, they're all related to Stewart's Creek High and Feters, or school, other high schools in that area, I think.
There are two, one to go to Stewart's Creek High from Laverne, and one one to go to Stewart's Creek High from Spurlock.
That's for next week.
It's kind of a precedent-setting thing, what you decide to do, you know, with some of those, but that, I mean, there's been dozens, but there's three that's brought it to the appeal, you know, it's very likely, each case will stand on its own, but it's very likely, when you look at them, you'll, you'll see the same pattern.
You mentioned there have been dozens of.
There have been dozens that have not been approved, zoning exemptions, you know, we held again on Smyrna and Laverne, basically, the second year, through the grandfathering period, that we would hold to not approve, just transfer it over to Stewart's Creek. We know Stewart's Creek's number's next year, just from the expiration of the, of the first year of the zoning of the grandfathering, it's going to put them a little over 1,600, you know, and then you'll have another year of that, 1,637, wasn't it, Mr. Zago, for Stewart's Creek High next year or something?
Yes, sir, there was 1,637, 1,680.
So, and so you'll have one more year of that, you know, at the end of this, we've had one year, you've got two years of it, you know, the grandfather.
Two years of grandfathering.
Right, and then, so you could, it's possible that you could, at the end of this coming year, open the zoning up for all of them, then the principals would have to watch their numbers so that they did not overcrow themselves.
What's our anticipated enrollment at Laverne and Smyrna for the fall?
Do you know what they turned in?
I'm sorry, Mr.?
Their, their, what was their enrollment at Smyrna and Laverne for the fall, high school?
It was about 1,900 or Laverne, somewhere around, so their enrollment's not changing that much, is what, and they did turn it in, I calculated, so it's, it's produced a little bit, Smyrna doesn't produce hardly at all, because we only removed about 140 students from there, and there are very few of them grandfathering, a lot of them grandfathering as well, but some of the grandfathering may last almost four years, if I'm correct, James, siblings, so we'll see these effects for four years.
Biggest, I know what you're probably thinking. Biggest thing you gotta, I, I think we've got to look at is the ones that have an appeal that are in the same case, probably is, is the reason we have to take careful consideration of these, is something is done, because they come back.
I understand. There comes a time when the academic differences that are offered at Stewart's Creek have to take precedent over the balance challenges of school population, and if we're in pursuit of an academic track that is specifically offered at one school and not offered at another, then that is a reasonable effort for zone appeal that needs to be heard without an absolute blanket of nobody from this school gets to go to some other school. I don't know if we're at that point yet, but at some point, we need to transition to where we are everywhere else, and if a student wants to be involved in the IB program at Oakland, then they have a fair shot of getting there, because such an absolute edict of you can't go from this school to that school is not in place. At some point, it'll be the appropriate time to say, on the merits of the application, we will consider a move from this zone to that zone, from Laverne or Smyrna, or Blackman, into Stewart's Creek. I don't know if it's now, but at some point, the, there are unique academic opportunities at Stewart's Creek, and we need to have that option on the table.
It typically, it typically turns out to be career and technical education opportunities, is what it is. You obviously, I mean, it's not just there. You have culinary arts at only some schools. You know, you have graphic arts and things, only at some schools it costs the cost of the printing. You have Stewart's Creek, you have a dental hygiene that you do not necessarily have at others. So, it's some way to try to balance between the two. I mean, I, I've been around long enough to remember when it was interesting that football players all sought a certain CTE course. So it's trying to find some balance, just to be honest with you, that, so typically what the board has traditionally done over a number of years, they would allow you to go take that course and return to your home school. If, first period of the day, last period of the day, if it's one of those things or something like that. We now have, with the periods of the day, the opportunity to earn about 28 credits with, and you only need 23 to graduate. So, in a lot of instances, we've allowed them to go and take the course and return. Now, you could do other, I, and it, and I don't know that this would be fair, like, you can't, we will let you transfer if you don't play athletics, but that's not fair to the kid that also has athletic talent.
I agree.
So it's just hard to write one policy that'll work.
I think our policy is good, and I think the exception that we put in place for the opening of Stewart's Creek is good, but that exception should sunset at some point, and that's my only thing to write, to, to raise, is when we go back and we look at the minutes of 2012 and, and those kind of things, it's not necessarily cut and dried that this is tied to the grandfathering clause will be in place for four years. It's a little loose. Now, it's clear on the application, but the application refers to a board decision that's a little foggy. So, when that time comes, you know, we should transition, and if there are open seats, then we have a policy for open seats.
Well, and I'll, I'll just speak in regards to that. I've been on board long enough to, to see this stuff, that if you don't have something in place, they'll come to have a floodgates to take this particular case. Protect, use that excuse to get there, then once they get there, how you going to track them? I've seen that over the years, but the, the main thing we've come up with, or I guess the board's ever come up with, is like Mr. Odom said, allow them to take the class. But I understand what you're saying, if you've got some room, I, my feeling is, I, I don't know what the real solution is, but it's something we've got to watch.
We opened Riverdale and Segal this year, didn't we?
Yes, and we had, all the high schools are now open, except for Blackman.
And then Stewart's Case, Stewart's Creek in the case of Laverne and Spurlock High Schools. So, openings, Stewart's Creek High did open up a lot of openings at other high schools as well.
We opened Riverdale up and Segal High this year, oh, I think because we're getting a little better balance in the numbers.
Yeah, it, it, it almost like if a student from Oakland or Riverdale wanted to be a part of that dental hygiene program at Stewart's Creek, they'd put in a zone application, it would probably sail right through, but, and, and I understand why. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to mislead anybody. I know why we did what we did, but there should be a time that we anticipate, that we say, we see this will sunset with the grandfathering program of the two-year variety, or with the grandfathering program of the four-year variety. I, I don't want, I don't want 10 years from now for us to go, oh, gracious, we never did take that off of the application, you still can't go from Laverne to Stewart's Creek, you know, just because. So, at some point, a very clear decision by the board may need to be made, because I can't find where a very clear decision has ever been made that exactly how this is going to transpire. At some point, it needs to sunset. May not be right now, but at some point.
I think, I think next year, if, after the two years of grandfathered deal, I think it would fall in this category, as being a school with opening, you know, with seats in it, so basically what you're saying, I think next year, it would qualify, if, if I understand everything correctly.
I think we're confusing two things. The board's decision was on grandfathering, and, and we only use the zone exemption process for grandfathering as a mechanism to track those who cho, chose to exercise that option. What you're seeing on the application was a decision that Mr. Odom made after meeting with the principals involved, that we would not entertain zoning exemptions out of those two schools. That was not part, part of the board's grandfathering option, or action. So I think that's, you said that you couldn't find it in the board action, that's because it's not in the board action. Mr. Odom has that discretion and, and used it, and had all four principals in to meet to discuss that, with the understanding that that will be in place one to two years to allow those zones to kind of gel into the Stewart's Creek zone. We've all seen examples between Segal and Oakland, Riverdale and Oakland, where if there's a course that's offered, German one year became the most popular course for athletics at school. I mean, those kinds of things have happened, and so, and, and even with Oakland's IB program, Mr. Spurlock was very proactive and put in those prerequisites, you know, he brought those to the board so that there was no question that these students were qualified for the IB program, and that has been very successful. And so, we have to guard those things. It's not as big of a deal with middle school and elementaries, because you, you don't tend to have as many specialized courses at those levels, but when you get into high school, there's such a variety of things offered, depending on what the students are interested in, or what CTE programs we've put in, that you have to put in a few more safeguards, or it'll become lopsided because of new bricks for all students. And we've talked about that multiple times.
From the structural point, I'm sorry, from the structural point of view, if we're moving some of these students at one time, it also causes behalf of full positions from that other school and us being able to track that as well. Once we have a full school, or a school that has equal numbers as freshmen through seniors, then that could be handled more readily without costing the board more money and teaching positions.
And Mr. Evans has mentioned a couple of things that I've been concerned with while I've been on the board, when it comes to protecting these zones, it's disruption of the school program, and I just do not want to see full-blown athletic recruitment, and if you're not careful, when one program is shining for that period, the students tend to gravitate towards whichever successful program is occurring at that time, and, and I think that's an error on our part not to be, be protective of these zones, except in special cases, and we get to look at the special cases. So I, I think we're, we're doing it right now. We're, we're looking and taking each issue as it comes up, you know, on its own merits, and then we'll make that decision at the exemption meeting. So, I would like to make sure that we, we do our due diligence and protect these zones as best we can, because I think it causes a system-wide crisis if we don't.
Anybody else? All right, nothing else, see everybody Thursday, 5:00.